Kristen, has roll call been taken?
Yes.
Chief Sutter, would you start us off?
Scott Sutter, Chief of Police.
Brian Lowfire, Chief.
Don Grace, DPW Director.
Brooke Card, City Treasurer.
Kristen Cunyak, City Clerk.
Ellen Glass, City Manager.
Jerry Link, City Council.
Pam Howd, City Council.
Mike Gilbert, City Attorney.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Dick, Mayor of Proton.
Tom Hicks, City Council.
Denise Miller, City Council.
Linda Simons, City Counselor.
So we will be moving to public comment. Does anyone wish to have a comment tonight? Hearing and seeing now. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have multiple items. City Council meeting minutes, application to use public property, 2025 tax request, resolution number 13-25, fiscal year budget amendment, and the financial report. It's our motion.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. I second that motion.
Kristen?
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Howd?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the Linden Mill Pond sidewalk project.
Simon?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As you're all aware of this, we've been talking about the replacement of this mill pond sidewalk for quite a long time now. And we've discussed various options, and we've talked to the DDA as well. And we're finally to a place where it looks as though we can move forward with your approval tonight. So, as you know, it's been in deterioration for many years. It has caused trip hazards. We've gone out, we've taken steps to have those trip hazards ground off and removed. The bricks over top of the dam are also continuing to deteriorate. We've replaced many of those, but the deterioration continues. So, we're happy to be having a conversation about this. You'll also notice in the memo that it talks about, we have sought out various grant opportunities for about three years now. I think we've attempted to get various grants. And unfortunately, we were unable to obtain any to complete this project. So recently, the DDA agreed to fund it in the amount of $75,000. And they were hoping that we could get additional money from another source so that they could select the alternate A, which is the stamped concrete option that you have in your packet tonight. Fortunately, the city manager was able to acquire that additional funding. And so we do have enough money set aside to select alternate A there. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have, and looking forward to getting the project completed.
In addition to Don's comment, this is actually budgeted within the DDA. They have the funds to be able to pay for it within their budget.
Do any residents have any questions on this item? All right, Jerry?
I'm good.
Pam?
I really appreciate the alternate A done because it'll look like the sidewalks around town, and it really fits nice.
All right.
Are they coloring it the brick color?
We can select the color.
I know, we have color, but they picked one or not.
Tom?
The stamped concrete, I think it's a great idea. Will that be strong enough to support fire trucks and stuff going across in case of emergency?
Yes, it's been designed to be a six-inch thick concrete.
And six inches is enough?
Correct. We've a base that they're putting in.
Okay.
Engineers suggest it's enough to support fire trucks.
I think that's a nice look, so thank you for checking into that.
Denise?
Yes, I am part of DDA, and we have seen all the options. The good thing about the brick look is it's the colors throughout. Am I right, Don? So you won't see it's kept up. And I know personally what we're dealing with right now is really bad hazard. I tripped over it once or twice, but the brick look I think is what it's really needed for, and I thank the DDA for helping. Thank you.
Brenda?
Nothing in addition. Thank you.
I would like to thank the DDA as well, and also our city manager for pulling the two together. I think this is going to look fantastic, and it's very needed, so thank you very much.
I agree. Thanks.
Thank you, Don.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion to approve the Linden Mill Pond sidewalk project, alternate A stamped concrete, and award the contract to Great Lakes Concrete.
Support. Armstrong?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Howd?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Next is BSNA cloud service.
So we had this on the work session agenda. As you guys know, the gentleman for BSNA was here to try to answer any questions. I didn't receive any follow-up questions, so back on the agenda tonight for consideration for approval. And this would be split over, just to clarify, the motion tonight would be approving the BSNA move to the BSNA cloud upgrade with the approval to be paid out in fiscal years. So it would be half in one fiscal year and half in another fiscal year. So it wouldn't all be out of one fiscal year. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do any residents have any question on this issue? All right, Pam?
I don't have any questions, just to comment that this is a cloud-based software, and so it's going to greatly improve our security and keep us safe.
Tom?
I have no questions.
Any else?
I believe that this will keep us a lot safer, and all our information on there, everyone's upgrading, so we want to keep it good. So thank you, Ellen, and everyone that had this available for us.
Brenda?
I'm happy to see this happen, so ready to see it.
Yeah, I think it's a good move. It sounds like this is going to be mandatory at some point in time, so it's good to get ahead of the curve and get it taken care of in advance, I think, instead of waiting.
My thoughts exactly.
Yeah.
Get rid of it, and we get to do the server upgrade anyway, so this will reduce the size of the server if we need to, you know, operations, so it will save us a little bit of money.
So I've been hearing about this at the small cities meetings that I've been attending, and they've been talking about it for a few months now. And they're all making the switch, all the different local municipalities, small cities. And so I actually want to thank Ellen for her diligence on this issue, because she's getting us ahead of the line so that we won't be having any delays and have to purchase equipment if something happened to ours in the waiting time. So thank you for that. Thank you. All right. So, we have a motion.
Make a motion.
Link?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Howd?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
The next item is resolution number 14-25, approval of the MDOT agreement. Ellen?
This is actually for Safe Road. So this has been a long time coming. It's a housekeeping item. We just have to approve who's going to be able to do the signatures and things like that. So we did this with, similar with other MDOT projects. So tonight, we're just looking approval so we can get the next thing checked off our list with the Safe Road.
Do any residents have any questions about this? This is, as Ellen was saying, the Safe Roads to school over by Hyatt. Brad, do you have any questions?
No questions, just like the fact that it's a civil document, private signatures, and just spending money, and it's 40 pages long. Thanks, I'm done.
How?
I think it's a great thing. I have no questions.
It's a long time coming, to be said, and you know, I know that the residents over there have been thoroughly employed for kids behind sidewalks. Thank you.
Glad we're getting on with it. Thanks.
Jerry? I'm good. Thank you.
I just appreciate the fact that we're going to keep kids and their parents safer while they walk. Can everyone hear Pam in the back? Oh, I'm sorry. I just noticed. I just am happy that we're going to pave those sidewalks to keep those parents and safe, parents and kids safe while they walk to school.
I'm glad to see it get started. I've had numerous questions of when this was going to finally come about, so I'm glad we're one step closer. So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the contract, approve this contract for...
Actually, it's a resolution.
Oh, sorry, resolution number 14-25. I'm a little, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
14-25, the agreement with MDOT, or the performance of engineering and necessary work related to the enhancement of Hyatt Lake.
Support. Miller?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Howd?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
All right. Ellen?
Yeah, so a couple of things. I am still working to try to mesh Lou's schedule with city council's schedule to give us a date on the books after request of the mayor. In front of you guys, you have a letter from Priority Waste. As you know, that we have received some complaints at previous meetings. I did reach out to Brett. We had some candid conversations, and he prepared this letter just explaining, I just asked him to reassure us that they're able to fulfill the commitment of the contract and explain disruption in services and how they were going to restore those. So this is what he prepared for you guys tonight. He did offer to be at the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, he had to be in Davidson as well. So I said, provide the letter. If we need to have you back at a future meeting, definitely, you know, put it on the calendar. So if we need that, I will certainly have him here at another meeting. And I know that it's been a significant disruption for Ralston Road residents and stuff like that, and we're trying to, anytime that stuff comes up, my staff and I are trying to make sure we get resolution to it. So we know that one's going to be challenging just because of the construction going on, but the other ones, you know, I have to say that they do ultimately end up remedying the situations, but sometimes it's a little longer than what we would anticipate. So, but if there's issues that you guys are aware of and we're not, please make us aware of them, or if you called into priority and you haven't gotten resolution, you know, of course, definitely let us know. Had a meeting with our risk management. We do that yearly. They go over any of the potential risks and liabilities within the city. I'm anticipating that letter coming forthcoming. And it's always an opportunity for us to review anything that we're doing. They look at operations, they look at policies, procedures, all of those things. So excited to see the outcome of that. We've always had good success in the past. My staff is just, you know, managing a lot of the different projects, working on year end. We've got water quality report going out, we've got taxes going out, we've got utility bills going out. So lots of things happening, also preparing for year end, fiscal year end, transition of low sea, all of that good stuff. And had some good meetings. I think I told you guys at the last one, had another follow-up meeting with Pete Moss and the Historical Society, just to go over some concerns they had with the draft of the lease. And we've been able, I know insurance, trying to work on finding them insurance and things like that moving forward to help with that. So still moving through process with Eagle for the Coffers Dam, for the mill. We've been able to submit all the additional documents, I guess, and so now we're just waiting for Eagle to give us the all-clear that we can, not advertise it, but it has to go through a public hearing stage. And so once we get the all-clear on that, then we can move things forward. So we're staying on top of that. That's pretty much it for right now. So if you guys have any questions, happy to field any questions.
Jerry?
Yeah, I guess it's a question, comment, on the priority. I've heard people are calling priority for, because when the salesman came in, he said that everybody would receive a new garbage can, okay? And then it became they purchased those from Republic, and if somebody needs a new garbage can because it's damaged, that they would supply one, and they have. The problem is getting from people is when they call, their first response is, oh, that'll be an additional $115. And then once, if they know, you know, divided a little bit, oh yeah, we'll get it replaced. But I think if we could talk to them and say, look, if somebody from Linden calls, you guys need at least the first can, you know, make sure that that's taken care of.
I will follow up with Brett on that point specifically. He did provide to Kristen and I in writing that if the can was, you know, damaged, that they would replace it as long as it wasn't caused intentionally or something like that. So not sure how they make that determination necessarily sometimes, but they have their way. But yes, I will talk to him and follow up with that to make sure that it's not, and I will encourage this, if you hear those situations, tell them to get in touch with us at City Hall. We'll try to get resolution to that, so yeah.
The other thing on top of that is, I mean, these cans, we've had them for quite a long time, so I don't know what the cycle, you know, what their life cycle is. So just to say, hey, my can's good today, well, it's five, six years old, I don't know how long the last contract was, but, you know, a year down the road, I just, I don't want priority to say, oh, well, you know, it's been a year. Well, this can's seven years old, so.
Right. Well, they should very easily be able to track the ones that they have replaced to date and continue that moving forward. So I'll definitely follow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Pam? Do you have any questions?
No, I do know, though, they have been responsive when they forgot our yard waste a couple weeks in a row. So they have been very good about going and picking it up, but other than that, I don't have any other.
Brad? Ellen?
No, we don't have that much time, so.
So your preferred method of communication is to send the information to you and your staff, Ellen? People make complaints or they... I think first, make contact with priority. You know, sometimes you're able to get a faster result. I saw you had the number on here, but I didn't know. Right. Yeah, no, I would encourage you to call priority first. If you're unable to get resolution, then obviously touch us with our office, and we'll try to help support in whatever way we can. Okay.
Denise?
As far as priority, they've been on the job for three months. I believe it's three months. I don't see it getting better. Maybe bring the supervisor in for conversation. I think it's comparative. I mean, my street, we had so much left behind. One week, it's no pickup for the leaves and branches and all that stuff. And then they'll come in, at one point Friday, they picked up stuff. And then when they do pick up, I mean, there's can stuff be flying, and they don't stop and pick it up, which are old ways. I have to compare. I mean, we paid them. And they did an awesome job. I mean, they pick up stuff. So yeah, I think eventually if this doesn't get fixed, where we don't have a date and they get picked up on a Wednesday, if it continues to be late or broken out trucks, they need to come in and talk to us. Is this just about priority, correct?
No.
Oh, it's the whole city manager update. Okay.
Eventually, I'd like to read a letter from Jan Laura from the Garden, and we have a letter from the Garden Committee that they'd like for me to read. We got time.
You want to do it during council comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So Ellen, I would like to see if you guys get any more calls or complaints in this next two-week period about priority. If then we can just go ahead and bring them on in, because this has been going on.
I'll plan to have them at the next meeting.
Okay.
Just regardless. Yeah, we'll just, and this is relationship building. He needs to, you know, their account, they're servicing our account, and you as council and our residents have to, yeah, be able to have that open dialogue.
I see this in my day job in multiple communities. This is, what's going on here in ours is not unique, but it is with, all with the same company. And so I don't want to be continuing, if the residents are paying for something, I would like to see them getting what they pay for. Thank you. All right.
And tonight?
All right.
All right.
Okay. And we have the department reports for the police, code enforcement, fire department, and Department of Public Works, and those are all in the packet. Thank you all for that. And so now we're going to move to council comments. Linda, would you like to start us off?
Me? Sorry about that. Thank you for your comprehensive reports. They're really good. I don't have any questions about those. I always appreciate it. And your manager's report as well, Ellen. Thank you for that. No other comments.
Can I go last? I'm waiting to see if somebody from...
Absolutely. Tom?
No, I don't have any comments. Nice, thank you.
Okay. Brad?
Questions for Dan? Linden Woods up. I know we paid them tonight payment fee, I know we still got a good hold back, got a punch list. Look, guys, can you walk through? Were they responsive?
Yeah, it did, really smooth, actually. Better than expected. Now, obviously, we have to get the work done, but as far as the walkthrough, there was really not much pushback.
Excellent. I also noticed on the sidewalk project, stairs into the mill pond, we added additional data by others. I know the keeper's been talking about improving some launch sites. I don't know if that was something that we put in there for them or...
That's part of the mill reconstruction. Adjacent to the building?
No, these were, you know, closer to the launch site, I thought.
I can look into it, will you?
Yeah, we'll look at it. That's it.
Jerry?
I'd just like to go back, because we didn't have council comment on the, at the work session, on the parade. I thought that went really well. Appreciate Ellen skirting child labor laws, having her children come up at work.
Listen, I know the rules.
But yeah, it was good to have, you know, to bring the family up, and they were very helpful, but it was a good event, and I've heard a lot, a lot of good things from people about it. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one last thing. I saw in my email that the MML is having a convention September 17 through the 19th. Is anybody going for that?
We just, they just released the early bird rate, so we will get that out to anybody that would like to attend. Okay, good. Thank you.
Pam?
I don't have any questions for Ellen.
This is council comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It has been a long week. I had a family funeral in Minnesota, and I'm just not recovered. So I just wanted to thank, I think the parade crew, the Linden Council Parade, Hot Doggy Crew did a great job. We served them up, we kept up with the crowd, and that was great. And Don, just to comment about the crack fill program on the street, they do a great job, and they create some very interesting artwork out there, better than something I've seen in Detroit Institute of Arts. It's like, hey, way to go. Summer art and serviceable work. Parks and Rec, we have not had much luck in fulfilling our dates. Like, we were going to do cornhole in the park, we got rained out. And then last week, we were going to do Little Explorers at the wooden park, guess what? Rained. So our next, we're going to try and make up some of those dates because people love the Little Explorer ones and Cornhole too. But I just want to mention that our next, our next dates for events are July 19, August 7, and September 11. We're doing another Little Explorers Day, we're doing more cornhole in the park and some other fun things. And our next meeting is July 17, so please come and offer your suggestions.
All right. I will go, and then we will move to Denise. So I want to start off by thanking the city staff, DPW, the police, and the fire, and the beautification committee for their hard work, especially in the heat throughout the city. So it's very appreciated. Thank you, guys, for all that you do. I want to thank all that are involved with karaoke. That is my children's favorite time of year. So they are very excited and can't wait for tomorrow night. I want to thank everyone that was involved in putting together the Memorial Day Parade, honoring those who served our country who are no longer with us. Thank you so much. It was a beautiful event. So thank you all, everyone, for that. I volunteered at the Laugh Paddle and Pedal, and I want to thank all the amazing volunteers that put that together. It's absolutely phenomenal. To see everybody come together that day was, for one cause, was amazing. So thank you. I want to thank you, Don, for getting right up on that with Linden Wood. Thank you so much for going through your punch list and being diligent. I appreciate you very much for that. And lastly, I'm very excited about the library and the museum coming back in the mill now that we can talk about it. I really am very excited about that and the mixed-use space that we're going to be able to create. But I know after being out last year, the importance of the library and the museum and the mill building, so I just want to, it's kind of like a win, yay, yay residents, yay city. And with that, I have nothing more.
Okay, well, we'll start with that. Couple people being in here. So a couple letters from Garden. The first one says, a special thank you to Tom, he wrote Miller, but good, for the cutting down the thistle in the field. She said that thistle's been an ongoing issue every year, especially when the siege are blowing directly into the garden. What a difference it makes. We are grateful for the extra mowing outside the fence. Thank you, DPW. This does discourage our little pests that want to come in, and it was so cute that the first day of the thistle being taken out, we had a mama and babies out just laying there, looking around. It was a good picture. We're looking forward to another good harvest and be able to share our flowers, fruit, and vegetables with the community. Please come and visit us anytime you're walking. And that's from Judy. Then we have almost the same thing. I would like to thank council members for the continued interest in the community garden. At the last meeting we had here, it was seen that Tom and Don walked down to look at the garden, and they noticed the thistle. And Tom agreed to come in and mow it down, got it down. A special thank you for the DPW guys that mow around our area and all their efforts to help us. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Jan and Laura from East Rock. I have a couple things, the sidewalks throughout the city, I'd like to see if there's anything we can really do for those. We have, I know that the city's not, it's not our job as far as the city to fix those, but we have sidewalks there like this. It's a big concern to me, especially if we got people out walking at night with their dogs. We have one that's a complete hazard, and that's just a few doors down from Calabria's. I'm not sure the procedure of how we look at our sidewalks, but we just want to make sure our people are safe. The parade was amazing, it's the best one I've been to. I think participation with everyone, and when the DPW, the fire department, the police, the soldiers, you know, it was so good, to see our community come together for a day of remembrance. And I think that's it, but thank you very much. You love the hot dogs. They ate hundreds of hot dogs.
Yes, they did.
They were cooked.
They were... People ask for them that way.
So tonight, we have a closed session, and so I would like to thank everyone for coming to this evening. You are welcome to stay. You are welcome to stay.
Yeah, we can go down.
You're welcome to stay if you would like while we go, or you are free to leave, that choice is yours. But thank you all so much for coming. Try to stay cool and have a wonderful night.
Making a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
Support.
Can you just, can you simply mention the purpose?
For city manager review.
Okay. I make a motion that we go into closed session.
And then take your request, Ellen?
Yes. And I have, I do have a request of someone's dad, they want to be in the city.
So, I have some points.
We need to roll, call them. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Dick?
Yes.